Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This chair doesn't want to roll. Item two is roll call.
Roll call. Mr. Frederick?
Here.
Mr. Gloftelty?
Here.
Mr. McAnally?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Roscoe?
Here.
Ms. Jamison?
Here.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes, excuse me.
Excuse. Mr. Bogwade? Here. Chair Freiter?
Here.
Item three is approval of agenda.
So move, Madam Chair.
Support.
I have a motion from Mr. Gloftelty. Supported by Mr. Long.
Yes.
To approve the agenda as presented. Mr. Gloftelty?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Jamison?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, you said, I didn't hear you. Mr. Frederick?
Yes.
Ms. Bogwade?
Yes.
Chair Bojess, the agenda is approved. Item four is approval of the minutes of the Special Planning Commission meeting held on Monday, April 7th, 2025. So move.
Support.
I have a motion for Ms. Jamison. Excuse me. Supported by Mr. Bogwade. Any discussion? No? Hearing none. Ms. Jamison?
Yes.
Mr. Bogwade?
Yes.
Mr. Frederick?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Gloftelty?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Chair Bojess? Minister approved. Excuse me. No, I'm not on.
You're okay. You're on.
Item five. Oh, I don't think it's. Item five, comments from the public on non-agenda items. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on something that's not on our agenda tonight? Seeing no one, we will move right on. And we have item six, which is public hearings. RZ 2022001, Wayne Lux Estate, and they are asking for a zoning map amendment, a rezoning, 2.73 acre lot from R1B to RM. And is the petitioner here?
Good evening. Jawad Funi Jai Adi, so this is, I'm the project manager on this project, and I'm here on behalf of Avrants, the developer. We, I got involved with this project in 2017, and going back and forth, we ended up with a residential project, eight, three units. And we are tonight seeking to rezone that specific parcel, which would be roads, landscaping, and underground utilities to support the rest of the project. I have a few slides. That's the site plan, that was the latest one. And it's going to be a townhouse clustered into 10, 5, and 4 units. Two entrances, one on Wayne and one on Beverly, with a playground on the south corner. That's the, the site plan with charts and numbers, site coverage, unit size, and so forth. And the designation of the property, which will be combined, of course. That lot we're seeking rezoning is on the left, and it's going to be developed, 55% of it will be bought, and the other 45, it will remain open land. And half of that developed part is going to be landscaped, with a park on the south part of the area.
So your property is on either side of the road, of the piece?
Yeah, it, it.
You're on both sides?
Correct.
Right, down the middle, okay. So obviously, you want to rezone it.
The one to be rezoned is on Beverly, but.
Right.
I think combining both properties, yes, to be off of Wayne and Beverly.
Okay.
And that will be the landscape plan. As you can see, it's very lush landscaping on this left side to provide better separation between the single-family residential and this project. And I have a couple.
We're, we're here to discuss the rezoning.
Yes.
We're not here to discuss anything about the site plan.
Okay.
You just had to give us a conceptual site plan.
All right.
Because you're asking for a rezoning, so.
I think he's just trying to give you an idea of what they've been talking about for a few years.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, this is what they're proposing, if it goes through.
I was able to be onsite where we installed the sign for tonight's hearing.
Uh huh.
And was able to speak with a few of the neighbors who came requesting some information about this project, and we were delighted to discuss that project.
Right.
So I see we have some more neighbors, and if they need to talk about, discuss that project, we'll be on here too. Basically, that's it.
Thank you.
After four years, excited to be at this stage.
Since this is a public hearing, I'll go ahead and open that portion of the meeting. Let everyone, we have on file an affidavit of first-class mail. If there's anyone to wish, wish to speak on this rezoning, please raise your hand, come to the podium, and give us your comments. You were first, sir.
I have.
Name, please.
My name is Ryan Stamper.
Address?
6340 Irma Street. I guess, in the excitement of this development for the city of Rhondda, I guess a couple concerns here from my standpoint on the business of Wayne Road. If you're going to have residents living here with small children, you have trucks coming up and down Wayne Road designated from the county as a county highway line. Both Wayne and Beverly, that intersection, has no turn lanes, as well as the increased traffic on Beverly. For my address, I have two small children. When I moved to this 1950s neighborhood, it's very quiet. I didn't know they would eventually develop something that's going to look over into my yard, as well as the developer has mentioned that we're going to cut those trees. We already had beefy trees, why cut them down? Why would you cut trees and then you're going to be overlooking into the 1950s neighborhood? You're building something brand-new, and that was, it seems to me like a new development isn't going to support the old neighborhood in its, in its existence. You're going to run new underground power lines. If you're going to do all these upgrades, you're going to leave the old neighborhood out.
Okay, now, we're just talking about the 2.73 acres that go down the middle.
Correct.
Okay. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
The trees net in there? Okay.
That's it? Yes.
Thank you. Someone else?
My name is Arden, I stay at 6299 Irma Street. I just wanted to know, because this is coming up to the back of my property, how, I don't understand, okay, are they going to put a bill of wall, or fence, or, you know?
That would be part of the site plan review.
Excuse me?
That would be part of the site plan review. At this, today, they don't have to, they just have to give us a concept of what, a concept of what they want to put there, but as far as talking about what's actually going to go there, that would be under separate, that would be a site plan. So we're just talking about rezoning, this one section.
Okay.
If I could, if I could add, so, it's, it's not that we can't, we're not approving a site plan tonight.
Right.
So we're not approving anything, you see pictures like that, we're not approving that tonight. There are, however, you have a very valid question, and that's, that's one of the things that we, pieces of information we want to share with you tonight. There is a buffer requirement in between a single-family zoning district and a multiple-family zoning district. So when this becomes, if it becomes multiple-family and is attached to the bigger piece of property, there will be required at minimum a 20-foot buffer. I believe, Jawad, you can help me out with some details. I think it's 32 feet, the biggest separation there. There's a requirement in the ordinance for a wall or a berm, plantings, something, the, the ordinance is flexible on screening, and what we always encourage developers to do is to talk to neighbors, to see what, what they want along there that's going to provide that kind of screening. So all of that is, the chair, chair is correct. These are details that do happen during site plan, but one of the reasons that we wanted to get this open for public hearing now, too, so you all could kind of meet and work with, the developer could work with you, so you all could come up with something in between there that, that everybody's amenable to. In that way, when they submit their plan, they can address some of the concerns that they're hearing about tonight. So, so, yes, the chair is 100% correct. We're not approving anything tonight, but certainly, I think the developer probably has some answers for you on some of these questions, anyway.
Yeah, you know, I got questions.
No fair question, very fair question, what's happening in between?
Right, yeah. Just, I just stated, I rested that there, and does it affect your, your taxes?
That's.
Your property tax?
It's going to affect his property taxes, because he's going to build on it, but it wouldn't, wasn't, wouldn't affect your property taxes.
Okay, okay. All right. I have questions, I got more questions.
Madam Chairman, if I may, just to add on to what Carol had said, when you talk about buffering, we've even gone where, okay, here's our requirements, but we can stipulate within our approvals, if we get to that point where the city can go out and say, no, 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 that's not enough, and add more. That way, everybody's satisfied with what kind of screening they get as we work through the process. We don't want to just say, okay, write to the, the law, and then have you have headlights in your front room. So we can work with that.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name is Anthony Johniken, stay 6313 Irma, and like we're saying, most of the people here, it's going to affect us. And what benefit is there, and why do it have to be there, like in our backyard? You know, what, in other words, what made that property so special, that got to be pushed in there, where really, we can say it don't fit? Why is that spot is prime? That spot is prime, there's a reason why that spot is prime, because you put in a city, you put in a, a building somewhere where we got commercial land on here, and there's a lot of land that's here that that can fit, but we putting it somewhere, yeah, you putting it somewhere where it's really not benefiting even the building, because say like, you got a brand-new building like that, and I want to add on to like, put some parks or stores, you can't even beautify it, because it's stuck in the middle of a, of a place of a, you know, a, you feel like.
Right there.
Yeah, it's stuck in a square where you really, you put a building there, and you really can't even do nothing else with it, but it's a reason why it's going there. And I just want to understand the reason. Do anybody understand what I'm, what I'm trying to say?
Yes.
Because see, that's a beautiful building.
If that's what they're going to put up there.
You know, and say like, where you put it at, for us to, we got the update to compete with that, you know what I'm saying? Instead of it being in another location where you can branch out to where, where, you know, whatever you want to do, like parks and stores, daycare, laundry mats, if you put it there, it can't nothing else, because nothing else go there. And it's going to disturb, like we say, we don't know if our property values is going to bring it up or down, we don't, like I say, we don't even know the aftermath of it. But the problem that I have with it is that a beautiful building like that, and you put it in some, near some homes where the homes is maybe 100 years, say about 100?
Yes.
Say about 100, and I just want it to make sense, because right now, it's not making no, no sense to where, considering how big Rhondda's is, and all of the land that's vacant, I just wanted, there's a good reason why that spot was picked, and disturbing the people who are already, the residents that's already, that's there, is disturbing them, because we're a good community. You put something like that up, and see now, it makes us look like we, we not a cheap. You know what I'm saying? It is like.
Right.
You putting a, putting a diamond ring on something where they get, and you got shabby clothes.
You know, through, through the chair, I, I think the developer can probably shed some light on you, you know, you mentioned you've been working on this project since 2017, and sure, even, he's the engineer, and I'm, I'm sure the, the folks from Avrants had some reason why they picked this property, and what they saw appealing about it.
Yes. I was not the first to get involved with this project, but I was the last. But with my conversation with the, the developer is, they were approached by, they were looking to do a project in Michigan, and they were approached by the landowner to, and they promote that piece of land for a development. They did major projects all over, in Canada mostly, and I thought that would be an opportunity for them to, to come in. Now, personally, I, 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 I don't leave, I love this community, I had the chance to speak with some of you, and I, I like, I like Rhondda a lot, and I, I don't spare any opportunity to promote the city, to my clients, to prospect developers and stuff. And, and definitely, you have the right to, because this project is going to be next over, you're going to have new neighbors, and so forth. It's a vacant property, we can't force progress, if you wish, whether progress is wanted or, I don't know what to say, but I think this is a nice project that will put a nice neighborhood in, in Rhondda's, and it will have an impact, not only on, on that specific spot, but maybe downtown, maybe, I don't know. So they like the area, they, they came and they walked the, you know, went to downtown, came to the city, and they decided to do their project here in Rhondda's. And that's the answer I have for you. I don't know what's a good topic.
I guess one of the questions they have, is this the type of building that you plan on putting on the site?
According to, to the developer, yes.
That's what they want to put on?
Yes, and we, we have the elevations and floor plans to, to a very advanced stage at this time.
And I think that's probably where their issue is, you know, they all have older homes in the area, and you're going to put in this, you know, three-story?
It's a townhouse, so it's just one unit.
Right. Oh, so it's three-story, one unit?
Yes.
So one townhouse, it's three floors?
Yes, you know, the garage are at the bottom, and then the second level and the third level.
Okay.
And it has a nice outdoor space on, on the rooftop, so.
Thank you. Anybody else? We have somebody else who wants to talk? Yes, sir.
My name is Joe Stevens, from 35872 Beverly. I wanted to know, how will this affect the sewage? Will they be putting in sidewalks? Will the sewage lines run, connect to, I don't know how it works. I wanted to know that. Will they be knocking trees down in the neighborhood, or how will they benefit us? Those people are going to have to walk their dogs through our neighborhood. Are they going to just walk up the middle of the street? We have irrigation issues. The, the neighborhood needs to be developed, if you want to develop.
No.
The areas that brings about it.
Yeah.
They are going to have to redo, you know, make sure there's proper sewage.
Yes, the sanitary sewer in the storm, so we're both, will be under full review is all our projects, and you could probably address where you're at with Wayne County on the storm. I know that was a big issue, because there's drains on this property, and aren't you proposing to cover the, or do something? Like, you can explain.
Yes, we're proposing an underground storm system, of course, sanitary and loop water main. And for sidewalk, we're going to build a sidewalk around Wayne and Beverly.
Okay.
And, you know, and, and also, we're going to have a park at the south west corner of this project. But the sidewalk is going to go around, literally all the way up.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, but you have to speak into the microphone, so the people at home can hear what you're asking. I, I'm not, you know.
Oh, you were asking.
Okay. Okay. Are you all set then? Okay. Who else wants to talk? Okay.
Hi, my name is Erica Johniken, 6313 Irma. My question is, our foundation, the trucks out there digging and everything else, would it be correct, older home walls? How would that be compensated?
If, no, no, sorry, in case it happens, you know, every contractor, according to the rules and regulations of this city, and everyone else, they have to have a choice. So, and then it will be fixed. I hope it never happened. I've never heard that one before, but it is the, the, the.
The properties that, the only properties that are going to be left is the term.
Uh, no.
Yeah, can you just note it there?
Jawad, if you could use your clicker and go to the site plan, that will show which parcels are staying and how your development works around it.
It, it, so, we have.
If you could talk into the microphone, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a smaller one here, probably, this, this is the church, it's going to remain, of course, and then you have that vacant property next to it, that's not going to be part of it.
Hey, hey, you guys.
Excuse me.
You guys, excuse me, Jawad, excuse me, can, because this has got to be heard by everybody, can you point on the, on the screen there, and then that way, that's shown on TV? Where the, no, you have a, there's a, there's a clicker.
A pointer should be a pointer.
Yep. So, so basically, you've got the three parcels on Beverly, at the southern part of the plan that are remaining, and then you've got the church going up Wayne Road, you've got the entrance in a building, and then another house.
Yes, one, two, three parcels, the, the church.
Yes, see if we.
And the church property, the three residential properties back here, and there's one up here, and all of these properties are excluded.
They're not, you're not, you're not monitoring how, you know, of, of, of state, same.
Okay. Okay, Kiyati, Kiyati, you got to get, get the mic here, so we can hear this conversation. Jawad, hey, you guys, you know what, you guys, because this is a public hearing, the, the one-on-one conversations, like, nobody here can hear it, nor can the people at home, and we don't want to have to redo this public hearing, because we didn't get things on record.
Nice to say that.
So they go back to the, to the podium.
Nice to say that.
Yeah, so if we could just refrain from the one-on-one conversations, that would be really, really helpful. I'm sure he'll be available after the hearing to, you know, kind of talk one-on-one with you, and get some ideas. He, he's the one designing the plan, so here, hearing what you, what you want to see, maybe.
And I'm sure he's interested in hearing what you have to say.
Right. But right now, the, the, the goal of tonight's meeting is for this planning commission to find, make some findings, one way or another, on the rezoning of this property, and make a recommendation to City Council. This, this action is under the authority of the council, but right now, they're, they need to get the findings out as to, is this property suitable for, for multiple-family zoning to be attached to this proposed development?
Did anybody else have questions?
Hi, my name is Joanne Polk, and I'm a resident of Rhondda also, and I was wondering, what is the facility that's going to be there? What is it? Is it a nursing home? Is it a?
No.
Apartment complex?
It's a townhouses, correct? Right.
Oh, townhouses?
Townhouses, right.
I see.
So living facilities.
Okay. And it's going to be in all the one building, like, it's going to be connected?
There, those, see the pink on there?
See all the pink on there? That's all the buildings.
Those pink is separate buildings, separate townhouses. The picture that he showed, Jawad, could you go back maybe to the illustration, to show that they're in buildings, and they're townhouses?
Oh.
So they're going to look, they're going to look like that, but separate buildings. So you've seen, like condos or apartment buildings with their, their, they all look the same, but they're all on one piece of property?
Okay.
So there's space.
So it's going to be several of those?
Several of those, yes.
Right.
Yes, 83 of those. But in separate bill, 83.
How many?
83 units. Yep, in separate buildings.
Some clarification to the chair, there's 11 separate buildings.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, there's 11 separate buildings, 83 units in 11 separate buildings.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Yep.
And they're going to make sidewalks to go to it and from it?
Yes, that's what he said, that, that's what he stated earlier.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Oscar Cortez, I reside at 6326 Irma Street. I have concerns in regards to if there is any wetlands in that parcel specifically. I know, I'm pretty sure most of my neighbors here, whenever it rains, have been, we got, we get a lot of flooding, you know, we get the ditches that, you know, is a Wayne County issue. But as far as any wetlands in that parcel, would that cause any greater issues to us as far as the development goes? And then, there's another issue regarding traffic at that corner specifically. It is very dangerous. I know my parents got in an accident on that corner of Wayne and Beverly, so building a multi, a multi.
Family.
Family, multi-unit building on that specific area would be adding more traffic going down Wayne Road, and make it increasingly hazardous for the people living off of Beverly and those surrounding streets. So I want to know if there was going to be any investigation as far as traffic, and how that would impact us? Because I know turning on to Beverly, sometimes, we have to make that turn really sharp, really fast, because there's a lot of people that like to speed down Wayne. So I, I have those concerns as well.
The city requested a traffic study to be done, we did a couple, and now, because we changed the shape of the project, we're going to our third traffic study, so, so a traffic study definitely is, is going to be done, and it will be analyzed by the city, and, and come up with the best solution to deal with, with traffic.
That will, that will be handled during the site plan review phase. The city's traffic engineer will review it, as will Wayne County, and what those studies do is they, they analyze, and then they tell you improvements. So whatever, I don't think we've gotten that far. So. Oh, and then, Jawad, did you want to answer his question about the wetlands?
Oh, yes.
And probably, yeah.
It has some wetland on it, the, the property, and we did contact EGO, which is the state agency on behalf of the federal government that deals with issues of wetlands and such, and they are waiting for a site plan approval to do their review. And they are waiting for a site plan approval to do their review. So, obviously, Wayne County as well. And, you know, for them, they, they need a solid something to look at. Instead of, you know, going back and forth, the site plan has not been approved. Oh, we changed this one, that. They have to do the review twice or three times. And from what I heard, they are really busy, they want to do that. Fine. So we're waiting for the site plan approval to approach EGO under the supervision of the city and the county.
Jawad, has a delineation been done?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Delineation has been.
So it does show wetlands?
Correct.
So there are wetlands?
Yes.
So to answer your question, there are wetlands on the property? And they'll have to work around those, either get permits. We try very hard to encourage our applicants to meet with the county ahead of time. And OHM, our, our engineer consultant puts it in every review letter that, because you can have a layout and it can, you can go all the way through, spend a lot of time and money. We've been dealing with this since 2022. And then the county comes back with something and says, eh, nope, can't, can't do that. So we're, we're hoping that once we get through this step, that once we get more into the site plan, that there's more coordination done at the county level.
We had preliminary contact with the county, with EGO and whatever agencies that we did contact. And they are looking for the upper site plans to deal with whatever issues they need to.
I wanted to know whether there'd be multiple entrances? Like, I've seen them knocking down trees on Wayne Road in the back. Would that be another entrance? And would it be like a water reservoir usually when they build?
No, no.
No, no.
Until we see a site plan, we won't know all this.
Except for the two sites that we installed on the property for tonight's hearing, we haven't touched or cut any trees whatsoever.
At the, the meeting of Wayne and Wayne Course, there is a fire station, at least an old one, with this development being placed in the neighborhood. Would be additional city funds to provide fire EMS for the neighborhood now that we're down to one station for fire.
What, no?
I have an highly doubt that that station's going to be pretty open. There's, there's four fire stations.
Madam Chair. I know there's plans that were announced about a new fire station slash police station at Vining and Wick. A brand-new, so that would be on the right side of the tracks. It would, it would be, that's what would service that area. The new, the new fire station that's proposed.
Also, we're providing additional fire hydrants and all the buildings will be sprinkled.
Yeah, there was, there was a, through the chair, there was an announcement of a, a new police fire station at that corner by, by Sheets. And just some more clarification. The, the only thing that we're really talking about tonight is that strip of property that's a hundred feet wide, 2.73 acres. The rest of it's already zoned multifamily. That's what this particular meeting is about. A site plan in the future would be the combined lots and then the proposed development with sewer and roads and all that.
That would all be part of the site plan.
Yeah, this is like step one to get to that. And then that would be a whole different meeting. And I love the fact that so many residents showed up. That's good stuff.
We usually don't see anybody.
That's great stuff.
You gotta be on top of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify and answer that fire station question.
Yes, and you've had some very good points that you brought up also. So at this point, I think we're all done with the public hearing. I'll close that portion of the meeting. Open it up to the commissioners.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Frederick.
And, and just a few more comments to just this 2.73 acre lot. It's a hundred feet wide. There was a single-family dwelling on it that was demolished in 2001, if anybody remembers the background. There, there's just a little clarification for that strip of land that we're talking about. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
Madam Chair. And, yeah, as Mr. Frederick said, we are just combining that one strip with the existing parcel that's already zoned residential to make it one big parcel to fit everything on. Is, you know, the question was, why is it going here? Well, eventually it's zoned correctly for the use, except for that one little strip. Something was eventually going to go there, probably. This is just the first one that's being brought before us. I mean, when you, there's not a whole lot of open residential zoning. Maybe there's. So, as far as why, it was an open opportunity for somebody to develop. They had the property there that was ready to be used. As far as all the other things that were brought up tonight, we certainly will look at that under site plan review and try to make sure that whatever goes there is something of quality and not a detriment to the existing neighborhood.
Right.
At least that would be my goal, driving through there. It's a nice neighborhood back in there.
Yes.
So, that's my thought.
Through the chair. I just want to make sure that I currently, I understand what you've put before us with respect to that 2.73 acres, that strip of land. On this drawing here, at the bottom, right by Beverly, there's going to be a playground there, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct, yes.
It's actually in the long strip. That piece that you pointed at is a single-family home, but it's, it's that long, it's that bottom part, correct? But the playground's only at the corner.
It's only at the corner.
If you look at, if you look at your other sheet where the site plan is, you'll see a little, little playground in the, you know, in your other one. It's just not on that area.
Yeah, no, it's, it's on this.
It's there.
It's there.
Oh, is it? You can see it on there?
Yeah, it is. So I just wanted to make sure for the records.
Yep.
And then from this diagram, it, it shows that the streets, there, there will be streets for Block A, Block B, Block C, and Block D. Would, the street would be in that strip, correct?
Keep it, keep in mind, however, we are not reviewing a site plan right now.
Ah, correct.
So tomorrow, that all could change.
Ah, correct, correct.
So this is just an idea of showing what they've proposed. The technical reviews, there's a lot, a lot of comments on our technical reviews. So we are being kind of cautious on the details of that plan. Like I said, that playground, that playground might be a wetland. They might not, or it might be something that, you know, there's, there's a lot more work to do on the site plan. So, we want to make sure that people aren't getting an idea of like, well, wait, they said they were doing a playground right there, because it may not be over there.
And you had indicated that 55% would be developed and 45%.
Again, we don't know.
We don't know.
Today, we're just rezoning, just changing the zoning designation.
I just want to clarify his comments that he made and make sure that I understood correctly.
That's what they're showing.
What he was saying. Okay.
But it might be move you to meet with the property owner and the engineer to find out exactly, you know, so you can have some input into what's going on there. I would, that's what I would suggest.
That would be great.
Yes. Any other questions or comments?
Just comment.
Comments, I mean?
Yeah, just one, one comment for some of the residents. We all live in Romulus, so we feel it, we understand. As someone mentioned, we're so glad to see you because the last time we had this type of meeting, not one homeowner showed up and we were really disappointed because we had to make some decisions on their behalf without hearing their voices. So thank you and I commend you for coming. And I use that corner, because I live down the street, not too far from there, on a regular basis, so I more than understand. But it is our goal to make sure we do what's best for the residents and the city. But traditionally, with new construction, it actually helps the surrounding areas in property value. So I know a lot of people are concerned that something new comes next to something old and it makes the old look obsolete. Actually, it makes the older homes actually become a little bit more valuable. So it's not necessarily a bad thing. But that strip of land, it's not really serving a whole lot of purpose right now. And it is really of no use unless they do combine it and do something with it. And as we say, we, we need more rooftops so we can try to get some more commerce at grocery stores. This would give us more rooftops. So, I mean, so that, we're looking at all of that, just to let you know that, that all comes to mind. So, if that helps anyone.
Thank you.
As we go forward, looking just roughly at this picture, I would look very closely at that park area location. I'm very nervous about how close to Beverly Road it is. I would like to maybe consider shifting that out of the right way of the road. That's just my top comment. The other question I had is, are these going to be rentals or buy-it-home properties?
The intent is not to have a rental property. Maybe it's for a one or two, three years of them. But intent for it not to be a rental.
Okay. And that be addressed as we go forward? Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
For Commissioner McAdely, when they're in their development phase and they're producing their bylaws, that is something that could be requested to go into bylaws, that they do not have rentals or they're only allowed a small percentage of rentals. So that's something that can go into bylaws before we actually get to that point. So there's some control there.
Thank you for adding that. To get it on the record, it is in the, the latest draft OHM review. Actually, I think in the Carlisle-Wortman review as well. That's a question we've had all along. So the solve was, and actually, I think you got involved, that get the, get the master plan bylaws up front and see what's, see what they're talking about. So, thank you.
Yes, very good. Thank you.
Almost always we have at least no short-term rentals to prevent someplace from becoming a, a party house for the weekend or something that somebody's renting out. So either you, there's some prohibition on rentals or a certain percentage of them, or it has to be at least a year of rentals so that you get somebody who's residing.
The more control we can get into it up front, the better.
Better, yeah.
Yep.
So, so with that, Stephen Carroll, I have probably a half a page of notes on here. Who do I address with those? Because I know that's, it's not the place and time for that here. But there are some considerations that probably need to go in place before they get too much further.
Absolutely, we're, we're happy to talk to you about that. You're, you're right, probably not here, just because it's detailed stuff. That could change. But we are, we've, we're on the third review of this. Things are in draft form right now. We had decided we probably need to get it up to the public to see if there's any further input that can be, you know, directly passed on to the developer as opposed to through, through our review letters. But yes, those are coming and happy to talk to you about it.
Sure, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just a, a question. Looking at that strip of land, 2.73 acres by itself in the city ordinance, can one build anything on it? Is there anything allowed?
If you meet, if you meet the requirements, it being zoned, single-family.
You could build a single-family house facing on Beverly if somebody wanted a huge, long backyard.
There, there are some institutional uses that you may be able to get in there. Somebody gets real creative with doing, you know, say a school with individual buildings or something, something to, but, yeah, but only a hundred feet getting access in and out of there is, is very challenging. That's why, you know, as Ben said, it's kind of a, it's a very difficult piece of property unless the residents want, want to buy some property for your backyards. That's, that sometimes happens when you get those pieces. We got a couple others in the city that, you know, some of the residents are picking up. But, yeah, a hundred feet is not very wide.
I just also wanted to make sure that, that went on the record and for our consideration too. If, if we're going to look at this to say, okay, if it stays the way it is, how can it be developed? Or what could it be developed into? And, and that's something I would also, you know, put to the residents or anyone who feels like this is not a good option. Is there any other option? Yeah, thank you.
Well, I don't see anybody asking to, to rezone it to M1 or MT. Since that wouldn't fly. Nothing industrial. So right now, the way it is, it's a single-family residential. Like you said, somebody could build and have a, you know, a long backyard. And so that's why they've come before us to, to change it from a single-family to a multiple-family. And then they can use that whole area to make it better and maybe, maybe add some parks or whatever. Instead of having, instead of having buildings on both sides of that little strip.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
My biggest fear is there was somebody who tried to jam a bunch of little houses with almost no yard, no space, and just put them in there because they could fit. I'd rather have it joined to the bigger parcel to be utilized in a better fashion. I'm not saying, you know, we're always in a game of guessing what could and what's the worst scenario. But in my mind, this makes the most sense.
Right.
So that's just my thoughts.
If you take a look at the Carlisle-Wortman report, Doug did a good job with a big list of findings. You know, it's in the recommendation and findings that fact on page eight and nine. He's got fourteen of them, so I'm sure you've read those. But it's quite a bit there. Many of them, you guys have reiterated here.
Yeah.
But, yeah, if it's consistent with the master plan, it's kind of a challenging site to do anything with, all, all of that kind of stuff.
Right. If there's any other questions or comments, a motion is in order.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. McAdely.
I'll make a motion to recommend a city council for RZ 2022001 Wayne Lux Estates, Wayne and Beverly, that we recommend approval of the rezoning request subject to the fourteen findings of fact that were provided in the planning report on page eight and nine.
So move.
If I could have a friendly amendment and instead of saying, "subject to those findings", could you say, "based on"?
Based on those findings.
I knew that's what you meant to say, because you say it all the time.
Thank you. Yeah, you confused me. I'm motioned by Mr. McAdely, supported by Mr. Frederick, to recommend a city council approval of the rezoning request for RZ 2022001 Wayne Lux Estates to change it from R1B to RM, multiple family. Subject to.
Or based on.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right, based on. I did. Based on the fourteen items that are listed in the, in the report, Plaiders Report, on page seven and eight or eight and nine?
Eight and nine.
Eight and nine. Any discussion?
Yes. One question, Madam Chair, in regards to, if this petition is approved for tonight and the plans change with another plan, have to be resubmitted?
No, we're only approving rezoning right now.
No, for the rezoning, that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about for the rezoning.
This is just an exceptional plan. This plan means nothing.
I'm talking about for the rezoning. Would it have to be submitted again?
What, what will happen is, is that this recommendation will go on to city council for two readings. In the meantime, during that, we will work with the applicant on the site plan and any comments. But once that second resume, rezon, once the second reading happens and the rezoning is adapted, they have put the pieces together and the site plan will come to you for your review.
So we're talking a couple of months at least?
Probably.
Well, we, well, we've been moving things pretty quick, so. There's a lot of comments right now in the site plan review, so there's.
No, I was thinking a couple of months. You have to have two months of meetings for council.
No.
Really?
No, just we get it done in.
Two months?
Yeah, in one month, two meetings.
Yeah, council meets twice a month, so just be. Yeah, council meets twice a month, so just two meetings.
So, you should be seeing it this summer.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any other, anybody else have any comments? All righty. Mr. McInally?
Yes.
Mr. Frederick?
Yes.
Mr. Bovade?
Yes.
Mr. Glutfeldt?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Jameson?
Yes.
Chair, well, yes, we recommend to City Council. Thank you. You know, thank you for coming. It is so refreshing to see residents of our city be involved.
Proactive.
What's going on. So, yeah, like really, we're really, you know, like I said, we usually sit up here and look at empty chairs.
One whole street, that's actually never happened before.
Sure. And then, like I said, you might want to know, you know, as it progresses, get ahold of the developer or the property owner and maybe they'll contact you when they see what kind of, you know, what your concerns were tonight. They may go ahead and contact you, maybe set up a meeting where you can talk to them one-on-one and maybe get some insight in what, you know, what they want to do and what you would like to see. Follow what I mean?
Yep, we always recommend that. So, do you want to...
Yeah, we always recommend that, but nobody's ever here to listen, to hear us.
If you'd like to leave your phone numbers or names.
Okay.
She can contact me and we can arrange a meeting.
All right. So, we're going to move along. Item seven is old business. We have no old business. Item eight is new business. And we have two items involved in the gas station and used car dealerships. The first one is TA 2025-002, section 11.07A, used car dealerships. And I believe that...
Actually, what we're doing is there are two numbers because they are two separate sections under vehicle uses.
So, basically... So, basically, we're not voting on anything tonight.
No.
You're just giving us...
We're kind of, we've been working administratively on this. Steve can tell you all about the city councils, gas station moratorium. And what ended up happening is, is that we got going with that, but then we've also had a lot of discussion on used car dealerships. So, we're looking at amending that section as well. So, no, tonight is just a very, very, very early. Steve wanted to, you know, kind of introduce it, get it going for you. So, he's got something to report back to council as to where we're at. Yeah, I'm good. I'm done talking.
Everybody got mapped today?
We did.
Yes.
So, the City Council, beginning of this year, January, passed a resolution to put a moratorium on new gas stations for a year. Any gas station applicant who had already submitted got to continue to process, but the planning department wasn't going to accept any new applications under this. Give us some time to study this whole gas station problem because we had a lot of gas stations coming to this town, both vehicle fuel and trucking fuel in combinations. So, we began to start looking at the existing ordinances and the concept of how many gas stations do we really need in Rodney's? We already have 26 who have licenses. And that's what's shown on this map. So, one of the things we did preliminary was to look at a distance of 2,500 feet between stations. So, we took the existing stations, put the circles around them of 2,500 feet to see what that did. And as you can see by the map, we've got certain corridors where there won't be any more gas stations if you have to have 2,500 feet between them because there's already enough to, that they're overlapping each other once it exists. So, that's one of the questions going forward is what should be the distance between gas stations? We're also in the, with the language change that I, we gave you that's real preliminary is that we didn't want more than two gas stations at an intersection. So, even if you could, the intersection was big enough that you could get the 2,500 square feet and it's not the square feet, 200 feet, you still could only have two of them. I'm not sure we got any intersections that are that large anyway. But so, we're looking at that. Also, the trend around the country is we probably won't see any small gas stations like we, some of the ones we have where basically all they're doing is selling gas. The new growing area is the gigantic ones that have a lot more pumps and sell a lot more products. And that's the trend that's going on and probably we've already seen a couple of those or so that are being built or going to be built. So, with those, you've got the additional problem whenever gas is pumped, even if you try to use that nozzle correctly, most of them now have a boot on there that you're supposed to seal on there before you hold the trigger to pump your gas. But you don't have to and it'll still work if you don't do that because there's both hydrocarbons and there's benzene and gasoline that escapes into the atmosphere. So, the more pumps you have at a consolidated location pumping gas in a 24-hour period, you have a lot more hydrocarbons and benzene's released in the atmosphere. So, you do have to ask yourself about whether our distances from gas stations to residents are satisfactory too. If you got to residents that are, you know, I think some of them are only 100 feet or so that are exposed to that. So, probably the distances need to be stretched. Maybe the total number of pumps that you can have at a location needs to be defined so you don't get any really mega big ones. So, that's the kind of thing we're looking at as, and how to define the ordinance so that you don't, you don't get as many gas stations as there are property owners who want to put a gas station in. And you have the ability, city has the ability to regulate that as to how many are enough for the community without having a gas station on every single corner of the city. So, that's what we're looking at. And we certainly welcome any of your comments. If you want to just email them in or whatever, what you think about having gas stations. You'll notice the ordinance really talks about, there's three different types of gas stations. It's your truck stop, that's like the pilot one where you have overnight camping going on, which is probably the most intense use. And that has one category in the ordinance. Then there is vehicle fueling and then there is truck fueling. So, those that are not a truck stop in that category would fit into the truck fueling station category. And we can have different levels of regulations with regards to those categories too. We decided that was important and as you saw in pilot one for sure and Sheetz even, questions of having adequate camera system so that the whole thing is regulated by the owner. The owner has to have some central system on the property that also allows them to view all those cameras. We're also looking at in here, if you're in a certain distance of residential, should you have to be closed between 11 o'clock at night and 5:00 in the morning, similar type hours for the benefit of those residents? What's happening, Sheetz is running into this. Several communities where they didn't, where they don't have the open land that we had.
Yeah.
They're trying to put a Sheetz station in on a corner that backs up the residence and they want to run it 24/7. So, the biggest complaint they were getting at most of those meetings was, I don't want to live next to something that's open 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. So, we're looking at that issue too, that if you don't have a, I think we put in... It was 100, I think it was 150 feet. The other concept that is in this draft is putting the canopy behind the building if the site will accommodate it. So, the language proposes that that's the default that is going to be behind the building. So, for the public going down the street, you don't see all the pumps, the cars sitting there. You have the entrances, the building's what sits out front. You got a nice building. And then back behind that, you'll have the canopy. If you're out driving around, you can see some of those that are... You go up north of here, you'll see more of those, I think, where as you go down the street, you don't see all the cars sitting there and the pumps sitting there that are gassing up there behind the building. So, that's another concept that you guys should, you know, look at as to whether you think that's an improvement for a gas station or you want the building sitting back with the pumps out in front. So, those kinds of things, we're kind of just looking at and eventually we're going to get back to you with a draft of proposed language changes tightening up the situation of how many gas stations are going to be permitted and also, you know, the setbacks, the layouts, things like that of the stations that do exist in existence. Madam Chairman. Does the second ordinance cover, let's see, the first ordinance, used car dealers? That doesn't include repair facilities, does it?
It does. Article 1107, if you look, A is the dealerships. And we're actually going to change A a little bit because it's loaded up with everything from dealerships to, you know, RV stores. So, we're going to separate those a little bit. Then we talk about truck stops and B, we go to the impound facilities, the storage and towing yards, auction facilities. And then we jump to, you know, the repair. So, the ordinance itself is we've added uses in over time. So, there's several, several vehicle uses in this section of 11.07.
We have, it's a little bit weird, but we have an ordinance that's not in the zoning ordinance. It also covers selling used cars. And you have to have a license from the state. You're supposed to, at least if you sell more than four vehicles a year, you need a license from the state as a used car dealer. And you have to have a commercial address for that. The state, somebody comes in and applies for one of those, they have to list the address. And then there's a letter that comes to the city asking us, does this location comply with your zoning ordinance? But what's going on, I think you guys are on the edge of just starting to see some of it now. Some communities, like I do work for Redford, they've been inundated with them because they got Telegraph and they've got Grand River. And they don't, and they started out with, you could have a pretty small parcel. So, everybody wanted to have a little used car lot. And one part of the thing that's driving that is now that the insurance companies are totaling out a lot of cars because of the cost. And generally, if it's 60% of the value of the car, they're going to total it out. And with the prices now of labor and parts, it doesn't take a lot to total a car out. So, therefore, you're getting more of these cars that are out there for sale that have, it's called a salvage title on them. But a person can buy those and rehabilitate that car and sell it as a used car. So, you've got a lot of want-to-be-used-car mechanic type people, I guess, that want to get in the business of doing that. Well, what I find is, you know, what rains and pours in Robbins, I swear, if it isn't gas stations or trucking, now it's car repair. You go from Goddard Road and Wayne all the way around to Five Points, how many do we have? Well, we have five. Now, we have four.
Yeah.
And one Clark's closed. So, though a true mechanic shop that's repairing citizens' cars, that's different than these guys. These guys are buying cars and doing some repair work. Flipping them. And flipping them, that's what they're trying to do. And of course, today's with the internet, they don't have to rely totally on it's sitting out there on their lot and somebody driving by is interested. They put them on sites on the internet and draw business that way too. So, we're looking at, okay, what, we definitely don't want them working on these cars outside. So, they're going to have to have a building on the property that's got, you know, my thing is they got to have at least a couple of stalls in there for, besides the sales area, you get a couple of stalls because if you're selling, even if you think you got them fixed up, they're going to be a problem when they sit there for a while and somebody is interested in the car and you go to start it and it won't start. We don't want somebody out there outside changing starters on cars or changing batteries and stuff. So, they're going to, so all these things that we got to think about is to, if they're going to be in the used car business, what do we want so that they're a good neighbor? Which, and there's also currently conflicts between a little bit that's in the zoning ordinance about sale of cars and what's in the general ordinance about the licensing of the sales persons. So, that's got to be coordinated. So, any ideas you guys have on used car lots? Some of the cities are actually bumping up the land area you have to have, which slows it down somewhat. We have one acre in here, which isn't real small. But because some of them had, you know, you could have a 60 by 60 block. Sell used cars.
Just out of curiosity, say I decide to sell used cars in my yard. But, no, 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 no. But I advertise them online so they don't, there are no signs on them that say used cars.
I mean, obviously, there's some of that going on, but if you sell more than four a year, you're supposed to have a license.
So, even though, even though I'm selling them online, I still have to have a license?
Yes. Yes.
Because the register tells them they'll have four.
And you have to have a commercial address that complies with the zoning of the community.
Yeah.
So, your home would not...
Forgot about that, yeah.
If you wanted to, if you said, if you wrote in and wanted to license, fill out the application, license to sell used cars on your residential lot, they're not supposed to at least prove that because it's, it has to be a commercial spot that's zone for the sale of...
I guess I'm not selling used car lot.
Just a little information through the chair. I know the city of Dearborn Heights, the corridor of Van Born Road between Pelham and Telegraph, they've really cracked down on that area for that. I don't know exactly what they've done, but they've got a handle on it.
Yeah. I think the thing that slows it down the most is a bigger lot. So, that you don't have to have cars on top of each other. And requiring a building, because if you go back, like we had this problem in Redford because they'd had some of these car lots for a long time. So, the guy's got like a little teeny building on there that was just someplace warm where you could talk to the customer if it was chilly outside when you're trying to sell the car. But, and you know, it didn't have, it's home didn't even have bathrooms on it. They certainly didn't have handicap accessible bathrooms in them, you know, and they, and they were built in a time where they were always built one or two steps up off the surface of the ground too. So, there's no way a handicap person could, one, get through the door and get up the steps. So, it... through the door and get up the steps, and, uh, so it, it, you know, you can slow them down by, uh, some of the things you, you do that you would, you want, you don't want all of all cars all the way down the street that are sitting there waiting to be sold.
The city of Taylor's also got a moratorium on, and also dealing with used cars, and the, um, one of the things that they're recommending in their new ordinance is that any car that's on a site, it, it, in the dealers', everything that we're getting in right now, they go hand in hand, they're, they're, just, you know, as mentioned, they're, they're repairing, they're taking them apart, they're putting them back together, oftentimes selling the used parts, which isn't allowed in most of our districts, it's only allowed in the MT district. In Taylor, they are requiring any car that's being worked on, if you're touching it, if you're, it's got to go inside a building. And most people, you know, it, that's a big, big, they like our one acre requirement, but we like the going inside a building requirement, so.
One of the things I've raised that have gotten mixed feelings on from different communities is, I found out in, in researching this, that, yeah, there's some state police regulation on this, and, oh, okay, like, because that makes, my mind, I'm thinking, that makes some sense, because somebody's snapping parts on a car and telling you, you can buy it, drive it safely down the street, right? Well, this, no, the state police turns out, they're interested in the criminal aspect of it. So their whole regulation is about, where did the parts come from that went into this car to fix it? Because they don't want a guy who's repairing cars during the day, who's sending his buddies out to steal parts at night that he needs for the next day's assembly. So to stop that, they've, they've instigated a pretty rigid process about the tracing of where the parts came from that went into this car. But the state police are not regulating the street worthiness of the vehicle once it's done. So I have concerns about that, that you're really preying upon people who don't know anything about cars, are not really in a position to take it for dress value and evaluate the car in any meaningful way, right? And, uh, okay, how good was this thing put together? So what do you do about that if you're getting, these people are selling these cars in your community? And I've heard everything, well, we don't want to get into their business, you know, to, uh, because I suggested, well, strongest thing, I guess I suggested, is why don't we require a three-month warranty on all the cars that are sold around this that are, started out with, with, uh, scrap titles? So that there's a period of time after the person buys it, they get their money back, doesn't last. Or at very least, require, you, you have to give the buyer before they, they buy the car, Carfax, or equivalent, Carfax is a specific company that creates the fact, so anything that's been done to that car, and the fact that this was, that these cars are once salvage titles, will show up on a Carfax. Um, and any legitimate repair facility nowadays are reporting to Carfaxes and those other kind of organizations, work that they do on the car, I just bought a two thousand twenty, then, I knew everything about this car, because the person had always had anything done on it in legitimate shops, and I knew when the tires had gone on this car, I knew when the battery had changed, anything in that car, just by reading a Carfax. So, I mean, anybody can buy one, but I think a lot of citizens are probably going to skip the cost of a Carfax, so do you, do you add that as a requirement, so that the seller of the car's got to provide a Carfax? At very least, then, if, if the buyer at least reads it, they get some history on this car, then, so that's, that's, I'm hoping here, some, like I said, some communities say, well, we're, we're not, we don't want to get in the guy's business as to how he markets his cars, that's all. Okay, so that's about all I'd say on, so again, we welcome any ideas you guys have about regulating, you know, the secondary sale of these, of these cars, and, um, and we're, and we're limiting it to ones that had a salvage title, we're not going to try to, your, your new car dealerships, we're not going to try to deal on with their cars, because they don't, the way they work, they, they get rid of those to the other, these other kind of guys.
Yeah.
They get winded on trade.
They get rid of them, the guy sells a lot of his front yard.
My front yard.
My front, when the diva gets rid of them.
So like, just a little background on some of that, all those cars that were salvaged on the Helene that were in flood, all come north.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And they're sold as salvage title cars. Nobody's aware. You should be leery of a salvage title, but that's on the buyer. Uh, the, the whole idea of the size of the lot, making them ADA compatible, these are things that we do have control over. Pretty proximity to, like, other businesses or housing, that's the stuff that we can actually control. As far as, like, saying, it's got to have, like, a three-month warranty, I don't think we can do that. That's, might, that might get kind of, because the state of Michigan, so, uh, so a salvage title is issued by the state of Michigan, and then when the person buys it and they register it, it's a salvage title, the state's aware of it. I don't know who does the vehicle inspection, or if there's one at all.
I couldn't.
Some states do, like Pennsylvania.
I couldn't find where the state of Michigan had any, uh, situations where they were reviewing those cars for their street worthiness.
They're not, yeah. Because I've heard horror stories about inert airbags, that, that they will not fire when there's no bag. And nobody knew that when they bought it, until they get erect, they didn't have the bag.
Or that maybe there's no bag in the steering wheel.
Yeah, there's, there's the net, you know, so.
Well, I, through the chair, I, I don't know about now, but about eleven years ago, when we bought our car, it was salvage, and after we fixed it up, it was required, um, for a police officer to come check it, test it, it did the whole road worthiness thing, and actually, he told us to fix one or two things for it to be certified, for it to be registered. Now, there, at that time, there was just two people in this area that did it. I don't know if that is still a requirement, or if it's still being done, um, but ten, eleven years ago, yes, I went through that process.
Again, again, I guess, I, I don't think it's being done, but, in my mind, a police officer wouldn't be the one qualified to do that, truly, anyway.
I mean, it was a police officer to me, but it was through a police department. I'm not sure.
They're just doing the, like, the basic safety stuff. They're not looking to see if the chassis been welded back together.
No.
Yeah, right, yeah, or.
Or if there's flood damage from.
Right.
That, that's a tricky one, I don't know how that's regulated, or if it's regulated at all. I know there's a lot of fly-by-night used car dealers that would do whatever they have to do to sell it. That I do know, that we have to protect ourselves from. And the size of a lot, ADA compatible, must be a building on site for, now you're, you're, you're taking, you're cutting into the profit.
Right.
That might be our best course of action. Just make it, if they really want it, and you really want it. If you don't, I don't know, you know.
Paid lot?
Paid lot.
Yeah, paid lot. They're still going to be selling them cars somewhere, though, someone's getting them.
Right.
They don't scrap them all.
Right.
Thousands of vehicles in that Helene, and they, they all come north, because they're rush free.
For the moment.
Yeah, you can, yeah. I mean, for somebody that knows what they're doing, you can pick up a bargain on that and fix the car and be fine.
That's a tricky one. Size of the lot, ADA compatible, paid lot, location of lot, you know.
And, uh, I know in Redford, one of the things they did, they won't, we have to, I think it was twelve hundred feet from another one, too, so you didn't get them all lined up down the street.
Yeah. Now, uh, speaking, I'm changing gears a little bit, uh, speaking to this, it's a very unique situation because of the airport smackdown in the middle. You can literally run out of gas if you had to go around it to get gas. It's like a twenty-four mile trip. So that is a very unique situation for the amount of gas stations that we have, because they actually have to be on the, the, around the point, so you can't cut through the middle. It's a very unique situation, almost like a lake. Like, there's one place to get gas and a whole lake, you get a lot of cars out of gas.
But looking at the Smith, I think you could actually, you have, you have access to it.
Yeah, but where you live, or where you're going, the direction you're heading is.
That's true.
You used to trade across, but.
Same.
The used car lot would be easier to control than a gas station. Because of the airport.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I don't really think of any way to protect the consumer, only to protect the city from what we get and who we get.
Is this only with respect to used car lots, sorry, three chair, um, and/or does it include vehicle and truck repair service and parking, if that'll include?
No, no, this is only going to be, as Carol said.
No, we're, we're actually going to probably tweak every single one of these sections, because there's a, some of it's just, just formatting, the, the, the uses don't coincide with each other. Some of them, for example, the, you know, the, the gas stations, you know, you've got, you've got the gas station, you've got the vehicle, but then you've got trucks, but the truck's not the truck stop, it's the, what you've been seeing a lot of, or requested a lot of, where you've got gas station, you know, in the front, the diesel in the back. So it's kind of getting all of that from a format standpoint, just to flow. Um, a lot of the standards are the same, so, yeah, we, we've got a little bit of work to do. We're looking at a ton of other ordinances right now, and there's a lot of really good ones out there, and a lot of people are going through moratoriums, so there's a lot of good ones being written.
So I, I wouldn't be surprised if this looks the same for, like, truck repair, you know, we, we have a lot of truck repair all over the place, and, you know.
Long as it's indoors, and zoned.
Okay.
And paved up.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Thank you, Steve, it was most.
Welcome.
Most enjoyable presentation.
He's got more work to do.
I don't know why people are laughing. But it's nice to see that we're actually, um, taking the bull by the horns, I guess.
They're a little proactive on it.
Yeah, right, proactive, maybe that sounds better.
I think we need to be very proactive.
We can move right along now. PC cases involving advice or input from planning commission?
Nope, we just got some good advice from you, so.
That's right, we just talked about it.
Yep.
Whoops. Reports on interest designation, Mrs. Roscoe, Ms. Roscoe, do you have anything?
Sure, I always, I always have something. I always have something going on. But you know, first thing I want to do is promote our Romulus community connections, because this is where, um, when this comes in the mail, I'll hang on to it.
Oh, yeah.
Go through it, glance through it. I mean, for instance, this middle section right here has everything that's going on in the next couple of months. And that's a good go-to thing, you know, throw it wherever, if you don't go through it, it tells you, uh, it gives you a lot of information. Um, the library, the senior center, the parks and recreation, uh, it gives you phone numbers, it's just a good thing to hang on to, even if you don't think you need it when it comes in the mail. But coming up in June, um, first thing we have is sounds in our district, which is down at the historical park, and it's our first, uh, free music in the park, and, uh, that is June thirteenth, and it's from seven to nine thirty, and they have Louis Lee coming in to sing. And they're, that's Romulus Alumni Night, so they're telling everybody to wear your maroon and white, and come on out and bring your long chairs and, and enjoy. And they always have vendors and different things down there, um, so you can get some food and pop, what have you. So, and then, um, you have the June thirteenth, June nineteenth Freedom Day celebration, and that is Saturday, June twenty-first, from twelve to five PM, and again, that's in the Romulus Historical Park, music, crafts, food trucks, and, and more. For more information, you can call seven three four nine four two seven five four zero. But, and then of course, we'll have two, um, movies this, this summer, and, uh, the first one's June twenty-seventh, it's going to be Sonic's The Hedgehog, and that's also right downtown, um, in the big field, next to the big pavilion down there. So, but anyways, like I said, um, when this book comes in the mail, hang on to it. And it also gives you, and this edition, um, again, mine went off in the middle of the night, your code red. You need to register for that, so your phone number gets on there, and when there's an emergency in the system, there's a major water main break, different things like this, it's going to, um, alert your phone, it's going to text you, it's going to call you, different things, like the other night when we had the, uh, thunderstorm, uh, you know, my phone was going off, it's like an alarm, and the next thing you know, you get a message or you get a text message. And you can sign up through that, um, if you go on the romulusgov.com website, uh, and go under code red, and that'll come up, and you put your information in there and get signed up for it, but it's really good to have, because any major emergency we have in the city, uh, they're going to send a blast out. But, um, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, anybody else?
Yeah, I'd like to piggyback off of Celeste. So, Juneteenth, I believe UAB is going to be giving out food vouchers again this year, like we did last year, so make that a note. Not sure of the number and how many people, I think last year we did the first five hundred or something like that, we gave out food vouchers, so we'll be doing that again this year. Don't know what that number looks like yet, but it will happen. Also, want to put a plug in for Hometown Hero, we are looking for elementary, junior high, high school, senior citizens, business people, your everyday neighborhood, person for nominations, and so those are still being accepted through the end of June, I do believe. And also, Romulus got talent is coming back again for the pumpkin festival on Unity Day, so they're looking, I think they're auditioning groups now, so anyone who has a talent, or thinks they have a talent, or want to find out if they have a talent, uh, that'd be a good place to do it. Um, they actually, the first year that, uh, we had the talent show, there was a group that came out, and since then, they have been non-stop, they said Romulus actually put them on the map, and so now they actually go out and perform all over. So, uh, we're kind of happy about that, because we gave somebody a chance to get there. Um, and also, food vouchers on Unity Day, as usual, not probably up to seven hundred people, but I, I don't have that number exactly yet, but we'll be doing that again this year, so. Hometown Hero, please, please, please nominate people, especially children, because we need to acknowledge that they do some pretty great things as well, so. That's about it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, then we will just move right along. And we have communications, and we have our reports on inter, reports on interest designation, if you can say. So any other questions? Anything I heard?
Through the chair?
Yes.
So page six of the planning report, DO and CO, three, 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 seven, zero, Trade Center Drive Suite, lot number five hundred, occupation of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and forty-three square foot, uh, I didn't take the whole building, for an airline and catering facility, four hundred and forty employees. What is that?
That is, they service all the food for Delta and a lot of international flights.
Oh.
Yep, Donco, they're right in the Trade Center. Yep, Donco, they're right in the Trade Center building, I think they have about half of the building. Um, they're doing just prepackaged food and everything in there now. They do have plans to try to renovate and ramp up to the 450. Uh, employees that you see, they're 24 hours, they're, they have three shifts. And they're trying to get to where, a lot of their food gets shipped in from Chicago, the hot food that you get served on the airline. And they're trying to get it to where they can get their hot food served and done right here in Romulus, and go right to the airport without trucks coming from Chicago all the time, every day. But that's, uh, they're, they're ongoing as far as their, they have a TCO for their prepackaged foods right now, and then their hot foods they're working on, trying to put a kitchen in, they gotta do oil-water separator, they gotta, they got a lot of work to finish that up, but that's their goal.
So, all right, so I pulled it up on the map here, and it's showing it in the middle of a field by a house.
Behind sheets.
Oh, it's right behind sheets?
Yes.
The top, top looks there.
Yes, over in the warehouse in North Point.
See what it's showing right there?
Just drive over there, you'll see all their cute little trucks.
North Point.
Yeah, that's, I see what it's showing.
Yeah, it's very inaccurate on Google Earth. That's what threw me for a loop. Okay, uh, 440 employees, good lord. You know, little-known fact, I guess, but Leonardo's, used to sell pizza on Northwest flights. For a long time, that's why that's such a big operation over there. They have a, because they used to push it out the door, put it on planes, but one day it just got pulled away from them. Hmm, I never knew that.
I didn't either.
Yeah, once they moved from Ecos Road to Equ.
Yeah, that's why they, they moved from their original location to that location, built a massive kitchen there. It was rocking there for a couple of years.
It's the O rock.
What is the reoccupancy of Dubai Saber Latino Restaurant?
They were in today.
Were they?
Were they?
On Meriman Road?
That is the, uh, formerly known as Luxury Nights, where they had opened that nightclub for a while, and then it got, we, they ended up getting shut down. And, uh, same owner is attempting to renovate and get a CFO for a restaurant. But that is, he's been, we've been in discussions with him for, it's gotta be the better part of a year.
I know they've had trouble over there.
Yes. And that's, he's, the discussion is he wants to open, like, a restaurant that is a night, that, that is also a nightclub, that only houses 96 people, uh, with the building, the way we look at it. And now, going through it myself, and the fire chief, and our inspectors, uh, the size of the building would require to be suppressed unless they firewall separate it. And then, any type of unit like that that's 100, over 100 people requires fire suppression anyways, which that building's not suppressed. And that was the problems we had with them before when they were open, is it was always way over occupancy. Which was the reason why we revoked the CFO, and everything went the way it did. Now, I would say stay tuned, because that use is permitted in that area, but they will, they have to meet all the requirements.
So I noticed down the street, the plumbing place is gone, but there's Naggy's Customs, that motorcycle place?
They, he, he manufactured, uh, not ma, I guess I could say manufactured, he sells motorcycle, like, parts for motorcycles. He also makes them, they have, like, a little, uh, retail area in the front that comes in there. And what he does is he, he makes these moldings for these specialty motorcycle parts. And then, once he figures the molding out, he gets a bunch of them made, and then he sells them. And he's, he's actually a pretty, it's a pretty good business, pretty popular for motorcycle, for, I'm not a guy that rides a motorcycle, but I know for guys that do, so the, the stuff that he does and sells are very popular.
But it's interesting to see cars there every day now.
Yeah, it's nice.
It's like actually somebody working in that building. Uh, so, going to another thing, I, over the old Kelsey Hayes, I know I've talked to you on this. So they've not submitted a site plan, there's no information in this report, yet there's tons of activity over there. And I'm starting to have people ask me what's going on.
Yes, so, no, they have not submitted a site plan, there is no development happening, happening over there. They didn't get a permit to clear and clean a portion of land that's over there, with no soil erosion. Um, and what they, they are attempting to, what their, what their thought process is, they're trying to get the property, clean up the property, and get it to where it's marketable, where they can get manufacturing jobs and different things, and, and idea that's two years, five years, whatever it is down the road, that's what they're trying to do on the property. So it's, so it's a booming area again with, with a lot of jobs, the new owners now. But they did, they went through everything that our ordinance required, as far as the, the tree survey, the large bond, they're, they maintain double the buffer that's off of there. And then at the completion of the work, we are going to go out there and see what that zone looks like, and see what may need to be put in or added in that area, but there is absolutely no development happening there whatsoever. No, there's a huge, large pile of dirt that's been there for years, that I'd actually like them to remove. But there's no earth moving, there's no digging, there's no buildings, no nothing going there, just that one area.
Because it's completely changed that whole area. It's, and I know the residents over there are not too pleased. Because they had no, no warning, no say-so, and, and if you go in there now and you say, like, oh, you gotta put them back, well, you can't put trees back. And it was like, I don't know, 80 years' worth of growth. I know that's gonna be a hot one.
That, like I say, that was, they went through and met everything in our ordinance to be able to do what they're doing out there right now. And they got the permit, we got the bond, it was, it was a permit that they didn't start doing any of that work until they were permitted, until the bonds were in place, till they met everything, and that's.
It just surprised a lot of people.
It's because they didn't come to the meeting.
They're all, all locked up, too.
What's that?
The front, they're, they're, yeah, they're.
Blocking off all the windows.
Yeah, well, they did, uh, they, yeah, they did a upgrade on the exterior, nothing on the interior yet, exterior, they did a lot of new paving, paving on that one part of the road. Um, they're trying to make a lot of improvements on the property, to make it more. Small steps at a time.
I know they had, uh, they had, they had a lot of work ahead of them there. Now, that rail spur line, that doesn't, still doesn't cut through there, does it?
Yeah, there, there's a spur line that still cuts through there, yes.
But trains haven't gone north out of there, they just in and out, is Home Depot still in there?
No, Home Depot has moved to the new building right next to the Amazon building in here on Township, Home Depot's gone.
Oh, okay.
I see, we have here, uh, someone who wants to open a used car dealership.
I got a lot of people that want to open used car dealerships, a lot of people.
Well, I mean, they're on the list.
It's moth to the flame.
Anyhow, well, any other questions or comments? I don't know about you guys, but I'd like to go home.
Make a motion.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon me? So did I get a motion yet?
Yeah, I thought somebody had said that I was gonna support it, but I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Okay, you're gonna make the motion?
Support.
I have a motion for Mr. Long, supported by Mr. Jamison, to adjourn this fun time we've been having here. Mr. Long, Mr. Long. Mr. Jamison?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. McAnally?
Yes.
Mr. Gladfeldy?
Yes.
Gonna fix it.
Mr. Bawade?
Yes.
Mr. Frederick?
Yes.
Chair vote yes, this meeting stands, adjourned.